So ladies and gentlemen, I have these, you know, requests to speak in person to us before the board. And you are given exempt two minutes to speak before the board. We ask that you please follow that guideline. And I will-
I speak for my son and any child who doesn't have a parent to be their voice. What has been exposed about Gabriel Geip by Project Veritas is exactly what I was concerned about happening at Babcock Elementary, Twin Rivers Unified School District, whom was and is not allowing parents or guardians on campus. As educators, your job is academics, not morals, not values, religion, political ideology, or anything outside of academics. We have 24 Sacramento students who are abandoned in Afghanistan. You guys are sitting here saying you have somebody preaching communism on paid leave? Do those lives mean nothing to you? What will you say to those children's peers who are asking, "Where are my friends? When are they coming home?" And you stand by this man preaching Antifa and communism in our classrooms? A disgrace. Any teacher or staff pushing anti-American hateful or political agendas against America on our students, families, or communities, we want you out. Now. Not paid leave and not in a week or two. Now. Sacramento is not a city that raises our children on hate, racism, or a victim mentality. We raise our children to be strong, independent, and to stand up for what's right and to speak up when it is time to speak up, like now. God rest our troops who we have lost in Afghanistan. God bless our citizens and allies still trapped in Afghanistan. We are praying for your safety and protection, and may God be with us all.
Good evening. My name is Richard Gilbert. I'm a Natomas Unified Parent. Some of my best experiences in high school were discussing current events and social issues in my classes. But not once, not once, did I ever know how my teacher felt about those things. I had my suspicions, everyone's human, but I never knew if he was a Republican or Democrat or she, if she was conservative or liberal. I didn't know. And that's the type of discussion I expect in our social studies classes in this district. I've heard, like everyone, anecdotes around the country of left-wing indoctrination in schools. And people would always tell me, "Oh, that's just, that's just an isolated incident. Don't worry about it." Well, it's hit home for me now. And I, I'd like to say that I'm glad the board has taken this action to start the process to fire this individual. I know it's not something that can be done overnight. But this does not begin and end with him. He was enabled for years. Complaints were filed and nothing was done. And people bear responsibility for that, whether it's the principals, whether it's administration, whoever. And I ask for a full investigation to root this out, not just from Endercombe High School, but from this district. I will not stand by and allow my rights as a parent to be trampled. I have to be here today. And I, I, this is not limited, just for your information, it is not limited to Endercombe High School. With absolutely no warning, my daughter, who's a junior at MP3 High School, was told that her constitutional law class this year would be changed to social justice. No, no parent input was given whatsoever. I contacted the teacher. I was assured that critical race theory would not be taught. I was told that my, my, okay, I'll wrap it up, thank you, that this would not be an issue, but it has become one. And I just would like to end by saying, this young woman tonight took an oath to defend the Constitution and to rid this country of enemies foreign and domestic. I ask that all of you do the same. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Monique Cockman. We have been quiet for too long about you trying to take our rights away as parents. We were silent when you took away our medical and religious exemptions away for vaccinations and when they became mandatory for our kids to attend school. We were silent when you mandated these masks on our children. When the CDPH and Cal OSHA knows that at maximum they're worth 10% effective. We were silent and some unaware when you began mentioning sexual preferences in kindergarten. We have been silent when you began teaching explicit sexual education in eighth grade and not giving us this information ahead of time. High school, kids are having sex in the bathroom at Endercombe. They're vaping in the bathrooms at Endercombe. Four guns were at the football game the other night, and you do not tell these parents anything. I know because I have a daughter there who tells me these things. Race is being caught. The first day of school that my daughter goes, her teacher tells her that white is the worst race there is. They tell her that you cannot be racist against white people. This is just too much. This man being fired is not everything that we want. We need our rights back as parents. And we need to know what you're gonna do to protect our rights and our children in the future.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I also want to thank Project Veritas for exposing this because without their vigilance, you guys would have done nothing because you did nothing when these students complained. And when a student complained, Mr. Geip stood up before, Geip stood up before the class and bullied him and said that if this flag bothers you, you must be who it's supposed to bother. He told the students to put their photos up on the wall to identify their ideologies. Children do not come to school to identify their ideologies. They come to school to learn to become productive citizens. My brother graduated from Endercombe with a 3.9 GPA. He and his fellow peers, right after graduation, joined the United States Marine Corps. And I cannot imagine that if that person taught my brother what path he would have been on if he was banished and indoctrinated in this crap that he is teaching, that you guys are paying him to teach, that we are paying him to teach. My brother is a proud Native American Marine, and I, my sign says, the motto in residential school was to kill the Indian and save the child. Mr. Geip is killing the American child and saving communism. Is this a residential school or is this a public school?
Hello, members of the board. My name is Amir Deliri. I've got my 10-year-old son here. He's also a student in the Natomas Unified School District. Everybody knows why we're here. You know, the indoctrination of our kids is unacceptable. There's a clear line in the sand that needs to be drawn. It's funny, I'm sitting here waiting for, for my turn to speak, and I see all the district goals, and it seems like that teacher has violated every single one of those goals. And it doesn't seem that there's been any accountability to the brave Project Veritas reporter who came to alert the school of child abuse that's happening. I wanna, I wanna quote Mr. Geip's. The reporter asks, you know, "How do you get the students to do this?" He said, and I'm quoting, "I scare the fuck out of them." Okay? That is child abuse. And this, not only is his termination need to be taken effective immediately, but I believe a criminal investigation needs to happen immediately. More importantly is the accountability. How do, if, if a reporter who comes and dons press credentials and says, "Hey, we have a clear case of abuse. We plead, we want, we want to show you this video," and they're turned away and the cops are called on them? You guys are public servants. You're taxpayer-funded. We pay everything here. It really comes down to accountability. Who's monitoring the classroom environment? Did somebody not go around and see the only two flags that should be in a classroom are that one and that one? Nothing else. I, I think we're all pretty disgusted with the politics that are going on these days. It does not need to happen to my son, who's headed to a public high school, or anybody else. Thank you.
My name is Sean McMurray. I'm a parent of two students. One graduated from Endercombe and had this man's class last year, and my other son is currently going there. So I'm outraged, of course. I'm furious about this. I know the indoctrination in the schools have been going on a long time. We know that the Antifa organization is no different than the Brown Church were for the National Socialist Party before the Nazis came into power. We know that. And the fact that you have such a pedestrian response to what has happened, like, oh, just by the book, it's just, we just gotta go by this section and that section. What about principals? What about the kids who have followed this man's path, went up to Oregon, maybe burned some buildings down there? What about them? I haven't heard anything about that. You know, maybe we should get a class-action lawsuit, endangerment of a child. You know? Maybe we should do that. So I wanna thank Project Veritas, and as you guys sit up there behind your bureaucracy, you guys, I blame the leadership from the top down because that's where it is. It's not an isolated incident with this guy. I've been in my child's classroom. I saw Planned Parent, a Planned Parenthood sign. It wasn't Spanish. I decided to bite my tongue. That was about four or five years ago, but it's no place for the classroom. These kids are formative. It's time for them to start their individual creative thinking and not follow some psycho and become a useful idiot for a Communist Party.
So my name is Jay Ash. I was born and raised here. I've lived here all my life. I've got two grandsons that are getting ready to go to Endercombe. You feel this pain right here? It's not going away. The only question I got is, where does the fucking buck stop? This is bigger than one teacher. If this investigation doesn't expose everything and you aren't above the board and transparent, I would challenge you to pick anybody out here to be on that investigative body. You're not gonna get it done, and we're not gonna be satisfied. This isn't going away. This is gonna get a lot bigger, and if you don't, if you don't have more of this, open discussions and, and, and revealing what's really going on in our schools, it's gonna get uglier. It's really gonna get uglier. There were so many red flags. The man had an Antifa flag behind his desk. He had Chairman Mao in the fucking corner. Are you kidding me? I hold administrators at that school? I hold, I hold the person that hired, I was a correction officer. I retired from there. They went all the way back to my junior high school. How far did you guys go back? All you needed to look at is what is social, what is social community or, or clubs he belonged to. His tattoos probably told the story. So where does the buck stop? Is it with you guys? Because if it is, you better do your job and you better get it right because you're not gonna get a second chance.
We'll expose them all.
Done. Drawn.
Thank you for hearing me. I need to remove my mask to speak. I was frankly mortified when I saw that video. It really, I tried to put myself in the place of a young student returning to school after a couple of years of isolation and just the horrible things, the isolation and the lack of social contact. And I tried to imagine myself as that student returning to classroom and meeting this teacher. Okay? He's a bully. He's not teaching what kids need to hear, what kids need to learn. He's not teaching for the student. He's teaching for himself. Half of these teachers that are in there, you guys should really, really take a long look at. They're teaching their crap. They're teaching what, it's their agenda. It's not what kids need to hear. It's not what kids should be learning. It's, it's socialism is communism. It's beyond that. The flags he had on the wall, we've talked about that. He's had murderers on his wall. My family tree holds two murdered police officers. My nephew just flew the last C-17 out of Afghanistan, and my son's out on Kalfar. So I know what I'm saying when, what America means to us, to our family, and to these kids. It is something special. We cannot have it be trod down in school. We cannot have our teachers putting down America, inciting racism, inciting all different types of things. These kids do not hear, need to hear it. They do not need to be anywhere near that ideology. And I actually suggest that you get counseling for his former students. Thank you.
Questions. Is anyone from the board gonna be available after to speak with us? And if not, then I'll ask my questions here.
He said, he said later this week. Tonight.
We've been, I'm asking because we've been trying to get comment. We've been calling the offices. We've been emailing. So I'll just, I'll ask my questions, just two that I have right now here are, have any prior complaints been made against Gabriel Geip? And have they been reported to Endercombe High School? If so, what were those complaints? When did they happen and what actions were taken by the school? And if no actions were taken, why weren't they taken? And then another question, the teacher in question, Gabriel Geip, stated that other teachers do share his beliefs. Has the board taken steps to identify any of those teachers who may have been sharing their opinions in the classrooms? And if so, what actions are being taken?
Good evening. My name is Louis Ortega, and I'm a current resident here in the district. My son actually just recently graduated from Endercombe High School this past year. And with that being said, the reason why I'm here tonight is to voice my concerns. The starting revelation that was brought to my attention yesterday from a video that surfaced online of a teacher by the name of Gabriel Geip. And my first initial thoughts upon viewing this video was disbelief, frustration, disappointment, and anger. Anger that a teacher at Endercombe High School, and I, and I'm gonna quote what he said, openly, "I have 180 days to make revolutionaries." And his response, and they, and they asked him, "How do you do that?" His response was, "I scared the F out of them." As a parent, this is alarming. Alarming that the school staff, principal, vice principal, other teachers in the faculty did nothing and allowed this indoctrination of these ideologies and beliefs to cultivate in his classroom. They did nothing. According to your statement that you guys released yesterday, that whenever civic education includes topics that may be controversial due to political beliefs or influences, instruction shall be presented in a balanced manner that does not promote any particular viewpoint. Are you going to sit here and tell me that Mr. Geip, in the way he presented the material subject matter is balanced and not promoting a specific viewpoint? Where is the American flag in his classroom? Where is the Constitution or literature of the Declaration of Independence hanging up in his classroom? Nowhere. Is it not the responsibility of the district to evaluate the teachers? Let me answer that for you. Yes, it is. According to your governing board, the expected administrators assigned to evaluate teachers shall be competent in the instructional methodologies used by the teachers they evaluate, be skilled in the supervision of instruction and the techniques and procedures related to the evaluation of the instruction. It is your responsibility to know what he's teaching. And it's been going on for years, and you allowed it to happen. That tells me that you're not even following your own governing board, your own rules. You're responsible for that. Why? Why allow this to go on?
All right, you're, um-
The school district has failed, in my opinion, and I'm gonna finish with this last thought. Because you've allowed this indoctrination of Mr. Geip and his political ideology to flourish in his classroom. You have an opportunity to correct this. Everything has been brought to light, and it, and like everyone is saying, it has, it does not end with Mr. Geip. There is some deep-rooted issues within this district.
All right, so I'm gonna ask you, please, to, um-
And I hope you guys make the right choice and make a change with this.
I have a student at Endercombe. I am a member of this community and a parent myself. I'd like to start off by saying that I am neither far right nor far left in my political ideologies. I am very neutral in my stance. I have not come before you this evening to discuss politics. The infamous video Mr. Geip was sent to me by my son due to the fact that I live in North Natomas. I got about midway through the video and had to pause it. It infuriated me. I was shocked that a person like Mr. Geip was being permitted to teach the children in my community. In the statement given by the Natomas Unified School District, you refer to balanced instruction as it pertains to controversial topics. It is very difficult for me to believe that a teacher with such radical views could lead a balanced discussion. As with most things in life, an element of bias is almost always present. I find it difficult to believe that his harsh views of government and society are not trickling down into his lectures to our students. I find his teaching methods to be similar to those of grooming. He is an authority figure whose life experiences and intellect far outweigh those of his students. Prior to this meeting, I had heard at least one of his students come to his defense, arguing that he is an intelligent, kind, helpful person and does not, and does give two sides to his lectures. I have no doubt that some of his students do in fact feel this way. As far as I can tell from his video, Mr. Geip is a predator of sorts. Predators, predators often possess all of these qualities. It is how they gain trust. When a child trusts the person in front of them, manipulating that child becomes that much easier. Shaming students who do not subscribe to his radical views seems acceptable to him and his environment. But let's be clear, it is not. It is not acceptable to ridicule, name-call, or disregard a student, their parents, or any of the religious beliefs that may drive their actions or beliefs simply because they do not coincide with his. This man is a danger to the minds of these children, and I ask that the district revisit their vetting process for future hires. Thank you.
Name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Robert Rossi. I'm a resident of Natomas. I would like to ask the members of the school board if they teach their children, foster children, or any young relative, or any young person they are custodian of, that they should join the anti-fascist action? Or teach them, if they feel uncomfortable about themselves, then they should change their gender? Or teach them to support Planned Parenthood? Or teach them that they are living on stolen land? Or that communism is better than capitalism? Do they teach them that Republicans are Nazis? I ask everyone if Endercombe Public Taxpayer High School teacher, Gabriel, however you say his name, Geip, wanted to turn his students into a communist revolutionary, scare the shit out of them, make them feel uncomfortable, and promote the things I have mentioned, would you want your child in this school environment? Would you want the teacher terminated? Would you want to know why he was hired? Would you want his teaching credentials removed? Think about the students that felt tortured, knowing that they could not speak out. Public K through 12 education should focus on core reading, writing, and mathematics. It should be a positive learning environment, not a radical education. I have the pictures of the posters that hang in the classroom, which I found out are now taken down. Thank you. If the Supreme Court can find the Ten Commandments unconstitutional to be posted in our public classrooms, then how can this be any different?
Yes.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Eduardo. Last name, Jaime. Thank you once again for not canceling the meeting, first of all. I'll make it quick. I happen to be one of those parents whose daughter was in his class. You know, I was proud to know that she was taking an AP class and she's looking forward to college. Then I come across the video yesterday. I'm still a little shocked, still going through the emotions. I contacted the school. I believe I spoke with Vice Principal Brian. He actually, I have to say, I felt his heart is in the right place. I said, "What's your opinion? Is that what you guys' policy is?" He said, "No." I said, "What am I gonna do? I know it's a teachable moment for me, but what can I do as a parent?" And he, I didn't think he was gonna say anything. He said, "You know why? You're doing the right thing. If you care about it, you're calling us. If you care about it, then go ahead and go to the meeting and let them know how you feel." I talked to my daughter, and she, the guy seems very nice, whatever. The first thing that he said to them, to the students at the beginning, the same thing that he said on the video. "I have 180 days to turn you guys into revolutionaries." That's how he started the year. Okay? Now, they asked him, "Well, you know, what's going on?" I said, "I can't tell you anymore." He said, "I don't know you guys yet." So from the very beginning, he planted the seed. And this guy is in a position of power. And part of me feels bad for the guy. You know? He went to Sac State, he's a local guy. But, you know, you guys have to educate, not indoctrinate. It's, part of me feels hopeless almost, that, you know, he's right. We keep moving to the left, 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 left. They're now putting posters of Mao. I could just go on and on, but I don't want to vent. Thank you guys for taking action. I'm gonna hope that you guys are doing it because it's the right thing and not because you're being forced to do it. Once again-
They're being forced. They wouldn't do it. They've been doing it for all these years.
I don't wanna know your political ideology. I don't care. I don't want radical left, radical right. I don't want that in the classrooms. I can't believe that we got into that point where a teacher is actually bold enough, a Marxist, an Antifa terrorist. I mean, it's just-
All right.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is my son. He graduated this year. Okay? He went, he went through hell last year, and you put all of us on the front line last year. We got to see everything that was going on. You have the men in blue here to protect you guys. They should be knocking on that door, arresting that man. I have nothing but respect for these men in blue as much as all these people do. If it weren't for these people, he'd probably be dead because people like this lifted him up. Do you guys know how much teenage suicide happened last year?
Yeah.
That's what we should really be talking about. That's on you guys. All of it. I wanna ask for your resignation.
Yeah.
You guys don't deserve this job. There's many people in this, in this room that can do your job a thousand times better. I promise you, I'm one of them because I care about children. I don't think you guys do. Or you wouldn't let this kind of stuff happen. This is ridiculous. I got this video this morning, and let me tell you, I'm not shocked. Why? Because there's another teacher right down the road at Leroy Green Academy who did the same thing to my son and to many others. And you people know who it is. I'm not even gonna mention the name because, thank God for these people, because I'm gonna go talk to them and they're gonna do another video. Because you're gonna see another video as soon as they get to talk to me. I promise you that. You already know his name. I don't even gotta mention it. I'm appalled that that man is still teaching at my daughter's school. I cannot believe it. My daughter's taking AP World History. She's so uncomfortable with taking the class. You know why she's taking that class? Because I wouldn't let her be in this other person's class. That's on you.
First of all, I would like to thank every parent that's in here right now. The second thing is, the reason why my daughter is standing behind me is because my job as her parent is to protect her from anybody that has ill will towards her. So being that this is her first year at this high school that is world-renowned and everybody knows about this school, it's so perfect, and everybody does everything right, the first time my daughter tells me, and she goes against my wishes to come out of a classroom that's disruptive to her well-being, I have an issue. I am very articulate. My children are very well-read. They are, they speak their opinion. They make sure that they are clear in what they do and do not like. And for the fact that my 17-year-old daughter had to come to me and said, "Mom, you don't understand. He's, he's, let me explain." This means that in two weeks, in 13 days, he was allowed to change my daughter's mind about some fascist crap that y'all have let into school. I'm tired. This is ridiculous. I'm from Texas. So this don't go on in Texas. This does not go on in Texas. There are two grades higher than California, period. So to think that my very sound-minded daughter would go against me and my wishes and our values and our home to be able to go and support this man, and he is putting her in harm's way, what the hell are y'all doing? I'm tired. How long does it have to go on before somebody says something?
Yes.
How long? How long? What are you gonna do? That's the question. Get him out of here. We don't fucking care about this boy. He got to go.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I'm not familiar with the order. My name had been called earlier. I'm actually a parent of a student in a local district. I walked, I actually walked with my social science major across the street from Endercombe High School. I have a lot of familiarity with school, uh, schoolteachers in the area. I substitute in the San Juan School District. This is not an isolated incident. This is why I'm out of, I left teaching because I can't deal with the politics here. My student, my son, is trying to make it through another area. The video showed here of the issue. He's also facing similar issues in his school. The parents in this area are awake. We're gonna be at all the meetings, letting you guys know. We're going to be at all the meetings, letting you guys know. I'll give this to somebody else who's in the district. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any kids at Endercombe anymore, but they did attend Endercombe High School a couple years ago and last year. What I'm concerned about is the fact that we have taken God out of the classroom, but we're letting in this type of evil, which is socialism. Why is it that it's so hard to let God back in and have a balance? These kids that are being taught Marxism and socialism, if you guys had noticed, they are more depressive. They don't have accountability. They're always playing the victim. We need teachers that really care for our kids, not because of their agenda. These kids nowadays, with COVID, with the lockdown, we don't... They don't need socialism. What they need is accountability. And exactly from what I saw on the article, that he's saying, "I'm going to scare the F out of them." And then now he's talking about he's scared for his life because Veritas put him out there? What kind of example is that to our children? And he's teaching our kids, high school kids, our future leaders? This guy and whoever is associated with him needs to be out of that environment where our kids are. I'm going to have grandchildren, and I don't want my grandchildren to be exposed to this. Unfortunately, all our parents here do not have the capability to homeschool or take him to private school. We are depending on you guys to give that kind of environment for our kids. Keep them safe. Do not send them to a depressive and a black hole state, because that is what's happening to our kids now. Look at them. Talk to them. Ask them. Because right now, these kids can't even speak up for themselves in the classroom, because they're afraid they're going to get an F.
Hello, my name is Wendy. And as a former teacher, I know that we're not allowed to share our political views, and the students shouldn't know what we believe, no matter what we're teaching. We're to teach the content and teach it professionally. Obviously, Gabriel did not do that, and we've heard lots of complaints about that tonight. But my concern is with the Facebook page. It says Natomas Unified School Forum. And we have a board member, Lisa Kaplan, who is an admin for that board, for that Facebook page. And today, when a parent asked to see the video, I posted the video from Project Veritas, the Facebook link. And her response was, "This is inappropriate for this forum and will be deleted." She says, "This is inappropriate for this forum and it will be deleted. Feel free to Google on your own." It's a Natomas Unified School Forum page that's public. And my response to that was, "Why are we censoring this? It's inappropriate what the teacher did." So you're censoring the parents from knowing what happened, and you have no problem with that, but you didn't censor the teacher. So he had it blatantly on his walls. So why are you censoring parents and not the teacher? Why is what we want to see inappropriate? His own words. Why are his own words inappropriate? Because he's been caught. But what he's doing is not inappropriate.
Hello, everyone. I'm Bobby. I'm a sophomore here at Endercombe. I go to school here. I am under all of your instruction. I was called last year, when I started freshman year, under the lockdown, politically illiterate, and all of my beliefs politically illiterate under Geib. A teacher I didn't even have. I didn't even know the guy. I was called politically illiterate for comparing his system and this entire system of the lockdown and all of that to socialism. Politically illiterate. Now, I have to say, I had a teacher before all of this, eighth grade, right before the lockdown happened. Mr. Fernandez. He escaped communist Cuba, moved to Russia, then that went communist, and we went to the Soviet state. Socialism takes your health care first. They own your body. Second, they take your education. They own your mind. This needs change. This needs change now. I don't know what else to say, but you all need to rethink all of this. And it needs change. I was in a class... I'm Jewish. I was in a class, and there was a "Free Palestine" sign next to a Planned Parenthood sign, flags of the LGBTQ, and women's rights. Do you not see the irony, the contradiction that's being taught? They were telling us we must identify with history personally. I need to personally identify with Hitler to know what he did wrong? No. Thank you. Thank you.
That was my son. My name is Deborah Josempa. He's in 10th grade. The beginning of the year started with a history teacher. How incredible. In this class, which he just spoke of, he went to voice his discomfort. Because it's just something that, you know... Yes, there are times, whether you agree with it, whether you don't agree with it. But for these children to have to see these images for an hour and try to absorb them without any explanation of what they are or what it means to them... They're just inundated with images without explanation. Go along to get along. Well, he won't do that, and I won't do that. I do have a question in regards to curriculum. Last year was very difficult. I know the previous year, I was so excited. This school district bought new curriculum books. We got to go and pick and browse and see which ones and voted on them. So last year, he got all of his workbooks, his books, brought them home. Not one teacher used those books. They had their own curriculum. Where is that from? Is it approved by you? Do you know what each of those classes are teaching? You don't. Because in his history class this year that he had for a week, they took identity tests. They took personality quizzes. A 14-year-old taking a personality quiz in a history class? For what? Exactly how does that relate to history is the question. And that was his question. My husband, who's a psychology data analytics person, said, "You will not do this homework." We sent an email to the teacher saying, "This is inappropriate. Give him a history assignment." She did, somewhat. Then the next day, same thing. But this time, he emailed his counselor saying, "I think I need to be moved from the class." Then he was called up by the teacher, and she said, "I think you need to be moved out of this class." So I don't think that's fair for him. He didn't do anything wrong. She did. And she was uncomfortable, I think, with that fact and the fact that we were pushing back. Time? It's time? Okay. So I have just one more minute. Why, why even today, they have yet to crack the books? Why did we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on curriculum when they're not using it? That's my question. I want to know. And if you know what the curriculum is? Because it's all worksheets and not books, including math.
The board members. And this is the guy who said he'd talk to us. The board members have left. They're all leaving. They're all leaving. There goes another.